All right, good evening and welcome to the Hickory City Council meeting on Tuesday, April the 16th, 2024. At this time, I'll ask if you're able to please stand and I'll invite the Reverend Kristy Laurie Sapp from St. Andrews Lutheran Church to the podium for our invocation. I would ask that you remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Sapp, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you for having me. Tonight, I offer you all a prayer for when we're heading to work from a book called Prayers for the Chaos and Grace of Daily Life by Arianna Braithwhite Lane. In the spirit of Matthew 5, "You are the light of the world," let us pray. God, our light, make us your lamp today. Anoint the efforts of this council done for you and done from love. Shine in their thoughts, illumine their words, warm through their hands, shimmer in their speaking, beam from their priorities, glow in their countenance. Sparkle through the stewardship of their skills and desires. Burn through their dedication in parts of the job they may not want to do. Use them, God, and bless their work. Commit them to faithfulness in tasks today, knowing greatness comes not through what is achieved but how it is done. And who knows what hope you will reveal through a small candle this evening? Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's in the back door. That's okay. All right, at this time, I would like to ask all of our police telecommunications that are present with us this evening to the front for a special presentation along with our officers that are here this evening as well. As you might not know, but it is National Public Safety Telecommunications Week and we give them, they're so special, they don't get a day, they get an entire week. So we certainly do want to thank them and recognize them for their service 24/7, just like our police officers and our firefighters and some of our other departments that work tirelessly. And our communications personnel, a lot of times work behind the scenes and perhaps they don't get all of the recognition that they should, but I can promise you that the work that they do is extremely important and none of the rest of it would work if it wasn't for them answering the phones and dispatching the officers on the radio. I actually started as a telecommunicator 45 years ago, right behind this building at the old police department. If you walk out that door, you'd have been in the communications section of the old police department. So telecommunicators have a very special place in my heart. All right, it says National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Whereas emergencies requiring police, fire, or emergency medical services can occur at any time. Whereas during an emergency situation, prompt response from first responders is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. Whereas the information obtained and disseminated by the Hickory Police Department Communication Center directly affects the safety of our police officers responding to emergency situations. Whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most crucial contact our citizens have with emergency services. Whereas public safety telecommunicators are the direct lifeline for our first responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. Whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Hickory Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals and assistance to the citizens of Hickory. Whereas each telecommunicator, while faced with the extreme stressors of the job, continue to exhibit professionalism, accountability, compassion, and teamwork during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, I Hank Guest, Mayor of the City of Hickory, on behalf of the Hickory City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 14th through the 20th, 2024, to be National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the City of Hickory in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Proclaim this 16th day of April, 2024. And Chief, I believe that you also had some comments that you wanted to make.
Mayor, I just wanted everyone to know what special group of people we have up here. These folks answer over 100,000 phone calls a year. They dispatch over 70,000 calls for service. And a lot of times, the people they talk to on the phone are in crisis and are able to do this calmly, are able to give us a lifeline, and our officers are on three, any help. And we could not do our job to any degree other than that. So I was going to say, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
You asked last time, was there any man that worked with you?
Yeah, I noticed that.
We haven't got.
But is he the only one?
No.
Okay, he's not the only one. I thought you got him out there. All right, we have another very special presentation, and for this special presentation, I'm going to ask our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood, if he would introduce it.
Like the Mayor Guest, the City Council have a special happening tonight, and I'd like to ask Matt Hutch, Chief Hutchinson, to come forward and introduce who he would like to join here at the podium.
All right, Mayor, Council, Mr. Wood, and Mr. Swanson, before I start, although they just left, they're not our primary dispatchers, the county is, we interact with them just as much, we'll call that number just as much. So everything they do, please let them know, we appreciate them as well. And soon with Viper up, we're going to be talking a lot more. So with that, I'll begin. I have with me today Jim White, who's the CFO for the CFAI Commission on Fire Accreditation International, Captain Marcus Scott to my right, and our mentor Chief Lambert from Dallas, retired Dallas North Carolina Fire Chief. The Commission on Fire Accreditation International created the accreditation process, and there are currently over 319 accredited agencies worldwide across the world. The process requires a department to go through a self-assessment focused on industry's strengths and weaknesses using data and analytics to continuously improve. So for reference, in North America alone, there's 13% of fire departments in the U.S. are accredited, 19% of Canada are accredited. In North Carolina, there are 25 accredited fire departments, of which 13 are Class 1. So that's a dual notoriety that we are one of those. So some examples of other ones that hold that dual accreditation and ISO is Asheville, Charlotte, Cary, Greensboro, Garner, Statesville, and Wilmington, just the name of the 13. Our department embraced the process of accreditation as an all-hazards, quality improvement model that is based on risk analysis and self-assessment that promotes the establishment of community adopted performance targets for fire and emergency services. Understanding the model's intent, our department began the process over five years ago, and we all worked together, and a lot with Marcus, to for it to culminate into our first peer team visit of this past September, 2023. We completed the site visit with plenty of stress and hair pulling, but we got through it, and the recommendation from the team was for accreditation. So of this year, on February 29th, 2024, myself, Captain Scott, Rodney Miller was there as well, we went down to Orlando to sit before the hearings, and we were accredited. This honor reinforces that your fire department is data-driven, outcome-focused, strategic-minded, well-organized, adequately trained, and properly equipped. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jim White, CFO, for CFAI Program Manager for the accreditation program, and you flew in from Florida today for this, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor, Council members, thank you very much for having me here today to recognize and to first thank and then recognize you as a community and Chief Hutchinson and his staff of firefighters for what they have done to get to this point in adopting the self-assessment model of accreditation for your community. Chief was culminating all those things that have happened to them in the last several months, but this just didn't happen overnight, as you all well know. You gave them the guidance and direction to make this process the way that they do business, and that's why they were successful. They just can't make it happen. They have to go about acting and going through motions through their processes to be able to develop and respond to over 250 individual performance indicators that all have to be deemed credible by our peer assessment team that came to visit you for your site visit. So again, they could not have had that happen without the team, not only from the fire department, but from everywhere throughout your community, your elected officials, your city management and leadership, your human resources, your finance department, your physical resources, communications that you talked about, your water supply. It examines everything that there is to do with providing fire protection to the City of Hickory. So I come to you as a representative of the commission, a 13-member commission that represents the fire service worldwide. We want to thank you first for using the process and applying it to your community and then recognize you with the plaque that we have today and to recognize the chief and all of your firefighters and your entire community for this recognition of being accredited with the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. So thank you, Mayor, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Now, see, it seems like I read somewhere that less than 1% of fire departments achieve this accreditation, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and then as the chief mentioned, not only have you adopted the accreditation model to use with your organization, but to achieve that and ISO Class 1, I know as my role, I was a 40-year firefighter and fire chief in Florida, and we had both of those recognitions, and it's not easy. But it does recognize what the community could, their commitment. When you say we support public safety, this really is that recognition of that, because you absolutely do, or we wouldn't be here. So thank you again, Mayor.
They have certainly earned it.
I'd like to memorialize this, I would like to have city council get up in front and with these folks and hold the plaque up.
We can certainly do that.
If y'all are okay with that.
We can certainly do that.
They came all the way from Florida and Texas, so.
Do we have to wear a helmet?
Now you don't get to wear a helmet.
Hey, Tom, maybe if they get back, if they can get up over the podium. Hey, Matt, you get in there, chief, yeah, whoever, however y'all want to line up.
All right. Can you get that trapeze?
Looks good, though. Better have three than run away.
What are you saying about that, Tony?
So we certainly want to thank all of our fire department personnel, not just those that are in uniform, but those civilian personnel as well. Chief, if you would, please pass along from the entire council how much we appreciate all of the effort that, I know it takes everybody to put effort into this, and please pass that along to the rest of the team, how much we appreciate this and how much we thank them for their service. Yes, sir. All right, next on the agenda is persons requesting to be heard. So at this time, I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to address the council? Is there anyone present that would like to address the council this evening? There's no use in me explaining the rules if nobody wants to address the council. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is approval of a minutes from our regular meeting of April the 2nd, 2024.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right, that carries unanimously. Next item is the reaffirmation ratification on second reading.
Move approval of the reaffirmation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That carries unanimously. All right, we do have a departmental report this evening, I think we have two.
Three.
Three, three departmental reports, so I'll turn it over to our city manager to introduce our first departmental report for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Guest, members of the City Council, Mr. Swanson, I said Crone.
You almost said Mr. Crone.
So the first departmental report tonight is presentation of the North Carolina Division of Parks and Recreation Accessible Parks Grant for an inclusive playground at Miracle of Hickory Park, be presented by Special Projects Manager for the City, Natalie Jackson.
Good evening, Mayor Guest, council members, manager Wood. So this evening, I have an opportunity to share an opportunity with you for the city, the Accessible Parks Grant. What this grant does is essentially allows communities to construct or renovate facilities to make them more accessible. It has an impact focus. The city has an opportunity to pursue the grant, and we are looking at requesting $496,000 for improvements to Miracle of Hickory Park. And actually, just for the record, not to improve an inclusive play area, but to build upon the great improvement that's happening right now thanks to our Hickory Rotary Grant. What's great is our RRS representative has confirmed that our local match can actually consist of the grant we just received from Rotary and the city dollars that actually went into installing the inclusive playground that we, that we're celebrating right now. The grant package is due May 1st, and we're hoping to hear in August if we're selected, if the council decides to move forward. So key points of this particular project, the Miracle of Hickory Park Improvement Project is based on a previous accessibility for parks grant that the city submitted the last round. And what's great is that we now have a completed Parks, Recreation, and Sports Tourism Comprehensive Master Plan. That increases our chances of this grant exponentially. The project has tremendous community enthusiasm and support and previous approval by council. So you have seen this project before, just with some small enhancements. It's supported by a study called the CPID when we took a look at our city and the four county region as far as individuals with disabilities go and what they have access to, particularly recreation. And also, our new Parks and Rec Comprehensive Master Plan supports this project. We do have an enhanced site plan, which I will show you, because we just wanted to make sure that we accurately reflected accessibility improvements. Again, that's the focus of this year's grant, and it is focused on access impact, and we're going from low access to high access, that's our goal with the grant. What's nice is it also enhances opportunities for veterans with disabilities to be served in a special way by proximity of the armory next door. And it's, of course, a perfect convergence of the Miracle of Hickory story, as well as military and the music that we hear on that property. So I wanted to just show you briefly the park improvement site plan and just go over a few key aspects. So we have the opportunity to increase accessibility by a series of accessible routes. So we have accessible routes programmed in so that individuals can make their way from the parking lot and make their way to the amenities on the park. Also included in this grant are an accessible stage, accessible restroom, an inclusive shaded pavilion, as well as additional parking in partnership with the next-door armory. So we're really excited, because basically, we're making this park accessible and usable and fun for individuals with disabilities through this project. So with that, I wanted to ask for your support in submitting this grant package, and I would open it for any questions you might have.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Natalie?
Natalie, I have one. When you're evaluating what disabilities will be accommodated by the equipment or whatever, is there, are there specific ones, or, I mean, how do you get your guidance for that?
Well, we used the CPID study and looked at census population centers. And actually, Miracle of Hickory Park is located next to most of our population centers that include disabilities. So we looked at that, and we said we can serve almost all disabilities through this project.
What is, tell them what CPID stands for.
The Community Enhancement Project for Individuals with Disabilities.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Natalie? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, just, that'd be great.
I would like to make that motion that we approve to go forward.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right, Natalie, when do we get the grant?
When do we get the grant? Hopefully, they'll tell us at the end of August.
I'm just thinking. That was a joke.
Yes, it's very exciting, because the playground that's going in now is beautiful. It's really a win.
Thank you very much. All right, once again, we have another departmental report, so I'll turn it over to our city manager to introduce Natalie again, and she's already up there.
Thank you, Mayor Guest. So the second presentation is the presentation of the Sandy Pines Master Plan Update, the FY 23, 24 Part F Grant Submission, and again, be presented by Special Projects Manager, Natalie Jackson. If you could move a little bit closer to the podium, Debbie will be able to pick it up on the audio.
All right. Good evening once again. So with this grant, the Part F Grant, we have an opportunity to actually jumpstart Sandy Pines Park if we receive this grant. So the North Carolina Trust Fund is affording us an opportunity to apply for a grant of $500,000, that's our max ask. And of course, through resolution that's presented to you tonight, we'd like to also ask for your approval of $625,000 to complete the project. And you'll see that we're going to offer quite a bit out of the starting gate. The Part F Package is also due May 1st, and the decision estimate is late summer, early fall, 2024. Once we would receive the grant and sign the contract, there is a three-year period to complete, and that would have been the same for the other grant as well. What's really great is that we have a new master plan. So the Sandy Pines Park, the property was purchased approximately 1985. 2018, the master plan for Sandy Pines Park was approved. Now, in 2023, we have a brand-new Parks, Recreation, and Sports Tourism Comprehensive Master Plan. So the timing is very good. We're able to use the grant for building or renovation or acquisition of land, so we're proposing the building of a first phase of Sandy Pines Park. The Parks, Recreation, Sports Tourism Comp Plan has a number of strategic initiatives, but three of those are touched directly by the Sandy Pines Park Project: improving and maximizing existing assets, planning for growth, and equitable and inclusive access. So in improving and maximizing our existing assets, Sandy Pines Park speeds for itself. The land, we have the land, and that land is already master planned. With regard to planning for growth, the northeast quadrant we found in the master planning process is in need of neighborhood parks. It's also the quadrant that has the largest population now and largest projected population in the master plan, its tenure period. As far as equitable, inclusive access to parks, we may have parks in the eastern quadrants. However, the neighborhood parks we have in the eastern quadrants are well below those in the west. So the master plan itself called for the development of Sandy Pines Park and its recommendations. Another great point to make is NCDOT has projected 29th Avenue Drive Northeast widening project as possibly starting in 2028, and we know that's subject to change. But the timing would be great with Sandy Pines Park. It's also a great time to start thinking about tweaking the 2018 master plan. So in our analysis of putting together the grant package, we realized that we need to create, we needed to create an efficiency. So we have amended the location of the bathroom for sewer efficiencies. Also, we wanted to update the budget numbers. Things cost a lot different in 2018 than they do in 2024, so we looked at what would a Phase 1 budget cost. And then there were some street name adjustments, just for accuracy, that we named in that update, which we're hoping you'll also approve this evening. And then we wanted to just give a summary of feedback that we've received in this process. What's the updated feedback for 2024 on this part plan? So here you see the site plan for Sandy Pines Park, and we're definitely excited for this launch opportunity, because it packs a lot of the amenities that are in the master plan, at least in part, in this first phase. So just to point out some of the amenities, we would have vehicular parking, as well as the opportunity to give a pedestrian access right out of the starting gate. And we know this park serves Sandy Pines, Havett Wood, and Parkview neighborhoods. So it's pretty cool that we can do that right out of the starting gate. Also, we're able to give a exercise loop, a paved walking trail, approximately just a little over a quarter-mile worth of trail. And we know that trails were the number-one unmet need that households said they needed when we did our Recreation Needs Survey last year. And trails are just big, so we're able to offer a substantial trail out of the starting gate as well. Also, what's really great is we can see here that we would be able to install cornhole boards and then, of course, a nature playground. So a lot in a Phase 1. So with that, we know that the city has invested in this property already through its 2018 master plan, which was produced using public input and existing site analysis. It's also supported, again, by our recent Parks, Recreation, and Sports Tourism Comp Plan and the Recreation Needs Survey that was used for it. Many of the amenities were high priorities for citizens in that survey. We also engaged civic groups, and we're happy to say that the Kiwanis Club of Hickory, as well as Hickory Sunrise Rotary, gave unanimous support for this project. Also, public input meetings were provided. We actually held two public input meetings, one here at City Hall, one at Highland, and we were able to receive input from citizens. We received input that citizens were excited to be able to have a neighborhood park in their area. Some were excited to have some of the amenities that we mentioned, especially the trails. And of course, citizens also brought understandable concerns for the site, wanting us to make sure that we had proper buffering between the park and homes, as well as accounting for safety and the floodway that is on the property, all things that can be addressed through the plan or through city staff currently. And we've received information also through phone calls, social media, and emails. Overall, it's a great time to develop the park on the heels of our master plan and a great multitude of input from our citizens. And with that, I ask for your support of this, as well as the master plan update.
All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
What's the percentage on that grant of us getting it?
What's the percentage of us getting it?
Yes.
The chance, you mean?
Probability.
The probability.
With probability.
Oh, my gosh, I wouldn't know. This is our first time submitting for it, and I do understand that sometimes it takes two submittals, but we're going to say it's really high.
Okay. Well, it's a very nice grant, if we could get it.
Yes, it would be a real, real blessing. We received input that citizens were excited to be able to have a neighborhood park in their area. Some were excited to have some of the amenities that we mentioned, especially the trails. And of course, citizens also brought understandable concerns for the site, wanting us to make sure that we had proper buffering between the park and homes, as well as accounting for safety and the floodway that is on the property, all things that can be addressed through the plan or through city staff currently. And we've received information also through phone calls, social media, and emails. Overall, it's a great time to develop the park on the heels of our master plan and a great multitude of input from our citizens. And with that, I ask for your support of this, as well as the master plan update.
All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
What's the percentage on that grant of us getting it?
What's the percentage of us getting it?
Yes.
The chance, you mean?
Probability.
The probability.
With probability.
Oh my gosh, I wouldn't know. This is our first time submitting for it, and I do understand that sometimes it takes two submittals, but we're going to say it's really high.
Okay. Well, that's a very nice grant if we could get it.
Yes, it would be a real blessing to the citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Coming off the heels of the first presentation, so as a city, is it our policy now, when we develop a new park, we would follow the accessibility standards and, you know, how we're updating Miracle Park? In this one, are we just incorporating some of those best practices?
The master plan that was adopted last year recommended pushing towards universal design. So anything we do, we want to make sure that everybody can come on day one and enjoy the park. And so that would be considered in this park development.
Is the 625 that we have on hand to invest, is that contingent upon getting the grant? Or if the grant doesn't go through, the 625 will still be invested?
No, my understanding from Rodney is only if the grant is received.
Okay. And my second question, the pedestrian paved trail entrance off of 21st Avenue Northeast, there's houses down there. Will accommodation be made to make sure that people don't park there to access the pedestrian trail? How will that be controlled?
That is something we can definitely do. There are bollards down there, and currently, that is the only part of the plan for that. But that is something we can take and look at with our law enforcement.
Yeah, I can envision people parking on the side to access it, you know, by foot.
No, that's a good point.
Yeah, so thank you, thank you so much.
Yes.
Any other questions for Natalie?
Just a comment, I think Doug Iver's in the audience, and he's on the board that will vote on the approval of these, so that might be somebody you could lobby.
Doug, see me after the meeting.
Thank you. If we could get a, just to vote to affirm some.
Yes, we need a, okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the Sandy Pines Master Plan Update and the 2023, 2024, I forget the acronyms, PARTF Grant Submission.
And the resolution.
And the resolution, and the resolution, all of them, everything, one big package.
Second.
So I'll make the motion, we've got a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right, that carries unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, for our third and final report this evening, and once again, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Guest. Third departmental report is quarterly financial report presented by Deputy City Manager Rodney
Thank you, Mr. Wood, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Swanson, good evening. Thank you for having me. Thanks for all the audience attending this presentation as well. I'm sure it will be very exciting, as always.
They're on the edge of their seats.
No one's left yet, have they?
That's what they were doing, they were leaving. They were on the edge of their seats.
But it is budget time, so they're all anxiously waiting to see what they get in the budget for next year. So tonight, our quarterly financial report, this is through the third quarter of our fiscal year, which ended March 31st. Our first slide is the general fund, the main operating fund of the city. The annual budget for the general fund is a little over $84 million. You see there, our revenues, most of our revenues in the general fund have come in through the first three quarters, primarily that's December and January, which is typical for all local governments in North Carolina. So that's why you see a significant revenues over expenditure number of almost $5.8 million as the revenues, so the last three months of the fiscal year, of course, expenditures will exceed revenues because you're not getting those property tax revenues in for the final quarter, but yet you still have monthly one-twelfth of your operating expenses to be paid. You can see that compared to last year, we're about almost $1 million ahead of the pace from last year through March 31st, and we're about $1 million under on the expenditures through March 31st.
Do we know how much of the tax revenue that we have received as a percentage?
Yes, ma'am, on this slide here, you'll see that we have collected 38, I think you had that question last quarter, $38.2 million we have collected. Our budget for this year was $37.1 million. For our property tax and sales tax, just because we have been down that road before, when you're certainly not guaranteed of these revenues that come in. As you recall, last year when we were adopting the budget, there were a number of appeals still outstanding for property tax. There are still a couple of those still outstanding, I'm told, with Catawba County. But so far, you're right, we have collected almost $1.1 million over our budgeted revenues for this fiscal year. Again, keep in mind, the only property tax revenues of any significance really are the monthly vehicle property tax revenues, because the primary real estate property tax revenues have already come in. They were due January 6th. Final point I'll make here is you want to see this slide increasing, or this chart. So you want your tax base to grow, as Mr. Wood says, that each budget cycle, you know, we're trying to add job growth, population growth, and tax base growth. And this is certainly indicative of our tax base growing. Similarly, on sales tax, sales tax is typically market-driven. So if the economy is doing well, your sales tax revenues are growing. Similarly, in a recession, those revenues are declining. Certainly, we've avoided the recession so far this year that we thought might be coming sometime last year. I've got a slide to talk about that a little bit. At this point, we don't see any indications of a recession. However, you'll note, compared to last year at this time, we're only $70,000 higher in our sales tax revenues this year compared to last year. If you look at the prior two years, you'll see a significant increase. Whoops. There's my presentation. Sorry. So you see in '21 and '22, there was a sizable jump of about $1.005 million, and those were the internet sales that came in North Carolina. The General Assembly finally passed the rules to make the Streamline Sales Tax Act, which made us consistent with other states across the country so that you can tax those internet sales. So the bulk of those revenues in '21, '22, and then the final amount between '22 and '23 are now embedded in the sales tax revenues that we receive. So truly, this is truly market-driven sales tax. So it's folks coming to Hickory, additional restaurants, additional shopping, things of that nature to increase our sales tax going forward. You'll note, we, at the bottom, we've received eight months to date. They're 45 days behind collection, they go to Raleigh, and then they come to us 45 days later. We have a budget of $16.7 million. We budget very conservatively. We only budget this year what we received last year. So again, as long as you're increasing your revenues, you won't get caught flat-footed not having the revenues that you've budgeted. Switching to our water and sewer fund, it's the city's second-largest fund. You see, they have an annual budget of $46.7 million. Their revenues through March, if you recall, through December, our expenditures were higher through revenues. I told you, historically, we'll catch that up in the third quarter and then in the fourth quarter as more water usage occurs here in the spring. We are $1.8 million revenues over expenditures. Last year, we did have a little anomaly in that we were about a half a million dollars behind. This year is not the case. That's driven by a couple of things. One, obviously, the revenue growth that we've had, but we've also had some expenditures that we budgeted this year, radiary meters being one of those that haven't fully been spent in this fiscal year. Permit activity, this is a really good slide. I want to thank Brian Fraser and his group for the work they do processing all these, as well as all the department and city staff that reviews all these permit applications. Look at the middle column there, 2024, and really, this is the, missed a decimal there instead of a comma, I apologize, but look at the residential permits, 447 permits this year. That is the largest we've had since I've been here, probably the largest since the late 90s.
And that is, that's going to be new construction and renovation.
And renovation, that's correct.
That's not just new construction.
Correct. And I've got that number for residential. Actually, single-family dwellings were over, brought out 150 new homes through March. It's very impressive that we haven't seen in many, many years. But you see that increase, about almost 38% increase in number of permits. A commercial number of permits were down about 15%. We still are at 205 commercial permits, which is still strong. And then look at the value, which of course leads to that property tax base. On the residential side, we've more than doubled our residential permit value, and on the commercial side, we're about even on the commercial. But that number, $204 million through March, again, we haven't had that happen since probably the mid to late 90s. Building activity, really, the first two columns here are residential in nature, which certainly reflects the number of permits we mentioned before. There's a number of new commercial projects, RH Behringer being one of those. You see one across the street at Bella Age, that apartment complex. Two new hotels, the Town Place Suites and Holmes Two Suites. We've got a couple car washes coming for your enjoyment. And then features, you see, Fair Grove-Turcho Road, we've had, the city's owned a number of parcels out there for over 30 years, and we've got a large 60,000-square-foot company building at Features there at Fair Grove to give that area some life. Obviously, you know about the Aviation Museum, you've been out there for the groundbreaking. 111 Main here to our east is going to happen later this year, as well as 23 Storage there off of 127, a higher-end storage facility there off of 127.
Can I say one more?
Yes, sir.
I hate to be a buzzkill about all this, but the numbers that you see, you know, the 176 units here, a lot of those have not built the first house yet, and those will, you know, build out over a period of years. So when you see all of those, it's not like it's going to happen in one year. Like, the Hamptons hasn't built and sold the first house yet, as an example, but they're putting infrastructure in, so just a word of caution, that is incremental over time that that will happen.
Yeah, and you can just look under the building activity. Those are the planned units, as Mr. Wood said. You can see those exceed 2,000 units. Yet, you can see on the number of permits, certainly, we're only at 447. So even if we get the 600 permits this year, you know, that's one-fifth, one-fourth to one-fifth of the projects that are planned.
How many people do you usually count for a residence?
2.2 residents, Brian, if I remember correctly, 2.2 residents per home.
That's about 5,000 more people there, I guess.
But it'll be incremental over a period of years.
Right.
Yeah, and I looked, single-family dwellings, 140, single-family dwellings, so that's, what's that, almost 300, 280 people, almost 300 people. Once they build them and then sell them and get someone occupied, so it will take some time. Economic conditions, on the Federal Reserve side, the last interest rate hike they had was July of '23. I think they had 11 interest rates over the last year and a half. We've kind of, and they've landed at a range, they do a range of 5 and 1/4 to 5 and 1/2 percent. That's what money we can borrow with banks, or banks can loan to each other. They, believe it or not, they are expecting two to three rate cuts this year. And what's holding them up, it's kind of a strange economy, is inflation. And certainly, we have not been immune to inflation here at the city of Hickory. But once that gets close to that 2% inflation rate, that's when we'll start seeing those rate cuts. And now they're expecting probably in August and September to start cutting, to really to try to cool off this economy. As you can see, nonfarm employment, they're still having over 300,000 jobs in March across the country. The unemployment rate is under 4%, another good benchmark. First quarter GDP still remains strong, it's 2.9%, but it was 3.3% in the fourth quarter, so it has cooled off some as far as the gross domestic product. However, CPI you see in March, it actually dipped up, or went up, annual increase of 3.3%. For us, some of these affect us, or some of these affect just our residents. Electricity's higher, 5% over the past year, shelter, 5.7. Shelter is remaining high, really, across the country. Food away from home is still high, 4.2% from last year, and gasoline, 1.3%. However, we have seen some decreases. Natural gas, for example, 3.2%, which is a welcome sign. New vehicles, 0.1%, but at least it's not growing. Speaking of new vehicles, I think I told you in December, we were having trouble primarily getting police cars. Chief told me, we just picked up four cars, so we're doing, you know, trying to find lots where they have cars available. We may not have the color we need, but it's vehicles that, you know, if you're trying to get 10 new vehicles this year, we've only gotten four. But it's a start, it's a step in the right direction. And then finally, Catawba County's unemployment rate did rise to 3.6% in February from 3.1. Well, there's an inverse relationship, so when that unemployment rate goes up, actually, we get more people. So that's why you see, we had 80 vacancies back December 31st, we've got 64 vacancies today in the city workforce.
Are those vacancies concentrated in any particular department?
They're spread across the primary public, primarily, public services and police. We're still looking for some employees there.
Okay.
This slide, speaking of interest rates, I guess this is the interest rate presentation. This shows our bond issues, as you remember, since we've now embarked on all of our bond projects, this was a good slide. Mr. Tony Wood and I had a conversation about this, so I wanted to show you. These are the amounts and the interest rates that we borrowed money for in '18, '19, and '21 to make the $40 million of GEO bonds. We issued those, or we're paying debt currently, of an average of 2.21% over 20 years for those bonds. In last year's GEO bonds, the average rate on a GEO bond issued in 2023 was 3.5%. Still lower than the 5 and 1/2% that the Fed says because GEO bonds are very inexpensive. However, that's still 130 basis points higher than what we issued, all of ours, on average. If we would have issued ours last year, it would have been an extra $5.3 million in interest costs. So we, in essence, saved that, being very fortunate for the timing that we did, that you did, and made those decisions each year to borrow that money. And now that money's been put to work with $50 million more in grants, and you see the Hickory Trail system taking off, and some getting completed and the rest under construction. Finally, our investment report. Again, interest rate, top right-hand corner, all of our investments were now over 3%. Last year at this time, we were well under 1%, so certainly, our investments are earning income now. We've earned $2.5 million citywide in our investments for the first nine months. Want to thank Melissa and her staff for investing in these securities. You still see, so US Treasuries there are those FH or FF, those are US government treasuries, very, very safe. But keep in mind, if you've got a three-year security, the interest rate on that is from three years ago. So some of those lower-interest-rate securities will start falling off, and as long as interest rates remain high, that number will go up. Money market, we've added that first line item, NC Class and NCIP. Those are two new money markets that have come to market in North Carolina to compete with the North Carolina Capital Management Trust that we've had since inception here at the city of Hickory. The yield on those are 5.4% to 5.5% overnight rate that we're getting. So the cash and money market funds, we're earning well over 5% on those funds. But a blended rate, again, is 3%. I'll stop there and ask if there's any questions. That's your report for this quarter.
Looks good.
I don't have a question as much as a comment. You know, the building activity, especially on the residential side, I know it's in the pipeline, it will come, but that's really the tool, that's how we get housing affordability, is to get more stock on the market, right? So, you know, I don't know that that's apparent to everybody, you know, it's not like we can wave a magic wand and get, you know, housing costs down. But, you know, by doing strategic annexation and rezoning and things like that, it allows that kind of growth to happen. And hopefully, you know, as this stuff comes online, it'll start putting some downward pressure on prices for housing, whether it's apartments or, you know, homes.
Great point. I'll add one piece of color to that, and that is, the housing mix is very diversified too, which is great. There are a number of communities across the state that are just getting single-family homes, or just getting apartments. We're getting a complete mix of those here in Hickory, and that's a good thing for buyers.
Absolutely, and I want to thank Brian and his staff, his team, because I think they play a critical role in being customer service friendly with these construction companies and getting this stuff approved. And that makes a huge difference, because I don't think every municipality has a planning department that's as customer-friendly as ours is. So thank you for that.
I'd like to also give a shout-out, if you'll thank your water and sewer providers too. They're really trying to keep up with all the growth as well, and putting those taps and reading the meters. I'll throw in that plug, too. That is all part of the equation. We've got a great team.
And along the lines of what Mr. Wood said, you know, I saw the COG put out a report today that there's still 7,600 vacant jobs in the four county region. So obviously, we don't have a sufficient workforce to fill those jobs. So obviously, we don't have a sufficient workforce to fill those jobs, so that's another reason that housing is so important, because that number will get worse if we don't catch up to some degree.
And I believe I saw somewhere where an affordable house is considered, what, 160,000? Is that the range?
Yeah, the ones we're building in Hickory on vacant lots, about 165,000. That is about as cheap as you can build and sell a house and make anything on it.
It'll be interesting when we give up the honor of having the oldest housing stock in North Carolina. You know, when we give that up, that will be a big day for us.
To that point, in our regional managers group of the four-county area, all four counties are seeing growth, which is also positive. We've said that at our prior retreats. We need our surrounding communities to grow as well, and they are having residential and commercial projects as well. Not to the same degree, but certainly, they're growing.
I have a little bit of an unfair question. Do you have any sense of what percentage of the growth in property tax is organic versus tax increase, tax rate increase?
I don't have a percentage, but I'd think it balances certainly more towards the organic. And I think it's just the, all the publications that we've received, we're the world's greatest city, don't forget that. But I think the notoriety that we're getting, I think the fact that we've got plentiful power, we've got plentiful water, so folks want to be able to build here, and then our quality of life and our affordability are really attracting, making us attractive to the rest of the country. And I think that organic growth is really what we're getting. I see people every week from a different state. And it's great to hear their stories that, yeah, I've read about Hickory and heard about Hickory, or I've got a relative and they said, try it out, so we've tried it out.
One, thank you.
Thank you.
So much.
Thank you. Any other questions for Rodney? Thank you, sir. All right, next on the agenda is appointments to boards and commissions. I'll ask if there's anyone on council that has any appointments they would like to make this evening. No appointments? All right. Any matters not on the agenda? No, sir. All right. Any general comments? Anybody have anything?
There was a thing came out today that Dana Kaminsky has been named Communicator of the Year, and so I just wanted to recognize her for what a great job she does for all of us. So thank you.
Congratulations, Dana.
I haven't announced that. Didn't embarrass somebody?
Uh-oh.
I heard yesterday we have a birthday.
Who?
Is that why you got a haircut?
Yeah, I got a haircut, yeah. Took 10 years off. Yeah, birthday haircut.
You're getting younger.
Yeah.
That's good.
I said we'd sing, but never.
No.
Happy birthday.
Let's spare him.
No, 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 no. No more, no more birthdays, that's it. I'm through.
No, you got to continue to have birthdays.
Oh, yeah.
That's a good thing.
That's a good thing. Well, happy birthday, Mr. Zagorone.
Atriax.
Oh, Atriax.
Atriax. I went to the opening for Atriax. I'm sure others would have also. On the, across from the city walk, wonderful building, enthusiastic people, and it's that old motorcycle building has turned into an extremely nice building.
And they were the first ones, I believe, that moved to the other side of the track in anticipation of all this growth. And that just speaks to, they saw the vision too, and they've got a fabulous, fabulous place.
30 people work there, and they've got many more offices they can...
Room for 50, I think it was.
Very nice.
Very nice.
Great.
Well, I think all of us have visited the Riverwalk since the opening. I was out there last Sunday, and I've never seen that much activity out there. There was 300-plus people. And a lot of people are enjoying it, so we're looking forward. I think that aviation and historic Ridgeview aren't far behind.
And the article in the day's paper about the place right next to the market, I think that's going to be coming right on.
We're already seeing growth on Olinor Road because of that, so it's exciting times. And the Aviation Museum, I haven't been by there recently, but I understand they've poured concrete and they're getting ready to go up with the building there. So that's going to be another great destination, I think, as well.
Great location.
Yeah.
We'll have the council staff retreat Thursday, have a little breakfast, then we'll get started. Be a full day, be a good day, a lot on our water resources, which is timely.
Once again, we don't say it enough, and I know they're not all here, mainly, we've got department heads here today, but please pass along to all of the coworkers in the city of Hickory. None of the accolades, none of the things we've been able to accomplish would be without our coworkers. We've got some of the best coworkers that any city council could ever ask for, hope to have, and so please let them know how much we appreciate the jobs that they do each and every day, because we are certainly blessed to have the group that we have.
We just need them to keep working.
We need to hire, we need to hire their, we need to hire their families.
Sean's not looking, he's ignoring me.
We need to hire their families.
Yes.
Because they've got good DNA.
That's it.
All right, anything else? Anybody? All right, I'll make a motion that we adjourn. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you for being here.